Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6 o'clock PM on Wednesday, June 22, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 7, 2022 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve them if there's no discussion.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Yesterday's eighth grade celebration was very well attended by families and friends, and it was outside. It was a beautiful day. Started out overcast, and then the sun came out and everyone got very hot. The eighth grade students were given awards and their certificate of completion, and families were able to hang out for a bit. It was really fun seeing that many of the families had their cars decorated with graduate of Webster Middle School, so that was really great to see. Our staff had their last day today, and things went well with closing out schools. We had United Way come and help at Mafre last Friday to do some cleanup. With our personal update, we've hired Matthew Traynor as the new Bartlett High School STEM teacher, Clark Honeywell as the Bartlett High School Biology teacher, Bridget Hamilton as the district occupational therapist, Hannah Silverstry as the adult education program advisor. We recently received the resignation from Abe Meyer, the music teacher over at Webster Middle School. And there's a series of contract renewals that were given to our Coda, which are our related service providers and our nursing assistants, and the middle school principal, Heidi Peterson. In other updates, I'm pleased to let you know that our new principal, Mr. Collins, is starting on July 1. He has provided me with some dates, and they've been shared with the Bartlett staff for them to drop in and meet him. Those were passed out when I held voluntary staff meetings last week at all the schools to thank our staff personally for their hard work and dedication to such a trying year. And as a reminder, I do want to let you know that Mrs. Promley is staying until August or September. Our NESDEC search is on. It closes on July 11. We have a screening committee that is composed of Anne Thompson, Ellen Jeffers, Sarah Phillips, Gina Wojo, Jill Recchia, apparent, Alyssa Smith, and Dr. Mackay, and Mrs. Barris will be co-facilitating that. They will be screening applicants on July 12, and it is our goal to start interviewing on July 14. So I will keep you apprised of that. Summer school starts on July 5. Our directors are in charge of these programs. They're listed in your school committee packet. We are well into planning our summer. Calendars are full. We have a meeting with our SSOs team on July 6 to really dig into strategic planning. We've been working with them all year long on strategic planning and the school improvement plans over at Bartlett and Webster Middle School. We're going to be taking a different approach this year, and more information will be shared at another time. As you know, the Bartlett Reno information forums were held prior to the vote last night. One was at Point Breeze, and one was at North Village. As you know, last night was a positive result, which everybody was very thrilled to hear about. And as a reminder for people who are watching, the town ballot vote is on Tuesday, June 28, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Town Hall. Please share your vote and your opinion that way. We've been busy with negotiations. Custodian negotiations are scheduled for July 7. We met for the first time with our administrative assistants on June 21. It was a very positive meeting. We actually had a couple TAs at that meeting. We'll be meeting again on July 7, I think. And I will be attending the superintendent's conference the week of July 11. Our summer professional development is much lengthier than that's listed in your program, but as a reminder, we have four teachers from the high school going to the project-based learning workshop this week, and that was granted to us through the 1-8 organization, free to us. We have Erica O'Connell and our new teacher, Matthew Traynor, beginning the Project Lead the Way training for the new healthcare and social assistance pathways. That is a pretty rigorous training, so we're glad that two people are going. And Michelle Bigelow will continue the training for the Advanced Manufacturing Second Course this summer as well. There's been some summer curriculum work. Mrs. Chapdalen was not able to be here, but she is working with teachers on lesson planning and for both literacy and math and STEM scopes, and we're excited about that. People had an opportunity to sign up, and I think she was thrilled with the number of people who are interested in doing some summer curriculum work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. First item for me, the update. As you know, they've been pretty active on the building. We did updating, outreaching, discussing. Very excited that last was successful, long meeting, but it was... Had an opinion heard at that meeting. That it passed. Will reiterate what Dr. Goggin said, that it's not over. Half the battle is done. We have a ballot vote coming up on Tuesday. We'll out again in support. Heard, but I did all say, ununderstanding the process and... What's next? The next step? What do we have to do? Is it done? So it's not done yet, but we're on the right track. So I just, it was amazing to see everybody there. In my time, that was the largest turnout I have seen at a town meeting in my time here. So thanks to everybody who showed up. We really appreciate it. I wish it was like that at every meeting. The next item, I have the Van Constantine Scholarship. As you know, we had lost one of our beloved teachers, Van Constantine. His brother, in honor of Van, had started a scholarship this year. In your packets, you'll see, and I'll just read what they've write. The first one was given out this year already. They wanted to get one out. We have raised, or I should say, they have raised about $10,500 in memory of Van. In the letter, it's for scholarship guidelines. It says Van Constantine was a resident and native of Webster and a 28-year teacher within the Webster Public Schools. His most recent role was teaching AP English and Journalism, as well as co-chairing the National Honor Society Program for Bartlett High School. He also served as class advisor to several graduating classes in Coach Bartlett's tennis team for six years. Mr. Constantine was awarded his degree in Education from Worcester State and later achieved his master's in Education from Leslie University. He considered himself a lifelong student of the art of writing and an avid reader and loved his role as a teacher and mentor to his students and larger school population. The scholarship guidelines, consideration and preferences will be given to a student that has demonstrated an ability and appreciation for writing and effective communication skills. Applicants can be considered, considering any field of further education and those facing a financial hardship challenge will be weighed more heavily. And then they complete their application form to, bless you, members of the, to the guidance department, and it'll be evaluated by members of a team over there. And the monetary value will be either a single $1,000 scholarship or two $500 scholarships, depending on the review of the committee. So we really appreciate Van's brother for heading this up, and I'm sure the students, you know, he's hoping this is something that's gonna carry on for some time, and the students will really benefit from this. Any questions on that? No. And then in just other updates, it is June, and we are closing out the year. We are looking at grants and trying to spend down anything. Mrs. Mackay has been very busy going through her grants, and we are looking to close out any grants that end in June. And a lot of the federal grants run right through the summer until August. But we are looking at the budget and working through the process, and I'm hoping it might not be the meeting in July, because we're meeting in early July, but in the meeting of middle of August, I should have more of a closeout budget view in August. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Perangeli?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the COVID protocols update. Goggin?
Hopefully, this is the last time we'll have this on the agenda. The week ending June 14, we had three students and one staff. The week ending this week, June 21, we had five students and six staff.
Thank you for that update. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation. So as many of you may know, the role of the school committee is actually three primary responsibilities, which include establishment of policies, oversight of the budget, and the hiring and oversight of the superintendent. So at our last meeting, Dr. Goggin presented her goals, and she invited us to come in and review evidence binders in support of the goals that she had established. And following that meeting, each member of the school committee completed the DESI form, which is a superintendent evaluation. And this evening, we're going to be unpacking one evaluation that has responses from all members compiled altogether. So just to begin here, I would like to start off by saying that this has been an extraordinarily difficult several years, and I think that all of us are coming out of this different than we went into it. And with that being said, I'll begin the evaluation, and then we can talk more about it afterward. So I guess the first step in this evaluation process is to assess progress toward goals. And there are three areas there. The professional practice goals, student learning goals, and then district improvement goals. So that first heading, professional practice goals, two members rated Dr. Goggin as having made significant progress, two rated her as having met them, and one rated as exceeded. The next area, student learning goals, two members rated some progress, one member rated significant progress, one rated met, and one rated exceeded. And the third area, district improvement goals, three members rated some progress, one member rated met, and one exceeded. And then moving on, the next area is to assess performance on standards. And there are four standards, yes, four standards. The first one being instructional leadership. And under that area, three members rated as needing improvement, one rated as proficient, and one rated as exemplary. Under management and operations, two members rated as needs improvement, two proficient, and one exemplary. Under family and community engagement, one member rated needs improvement, three members rated proficient, and one rated exemplary. Standard four, professional culture, four members rated proficient and one rated exemplary. So there were a lot of comments that were provided throughout this evaluation, and I will not read the comments for each individual area. But what I would like to do in the first section here are some sort of overall evaluator comments. And I think it's important that I share what comments were shared by various members of the committee. Because once again, this year, I think, I'm not an education volunteer here on the school board, but from what I have observed, two years of having children not in the building and then bringing children back in the building, I think has been a little more than any of us has really bargained for and has resulted in, you know, some challenges. So with that being said, oh, actually, one, two more areas before I go into comments. I apologize. The next step was to rate the overall summative performance. And under that overall, there were three committee members that rated as needs improvement, one as proficient, and one as exemplary. And the impact on student learning, there were only four responses to that question. Two said moderate and two high. And now, step five is actually the evaluator comments. So I'm just gonna unpack them as they're here. I'm not going to attribute them to individual members. Dr. Goggin has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the Webster Public School District through her work ethic, continual innovation, and strong community partnerships. Under Dr. Goggin's leadership, the Webster School District has brought students back into the classroom after several years of unconventional learning. This return to the school building has presented unique behavioral challenges coupled with learning deficits resulting from the previous need for remote learning. Strong internal relationships and consistency within the administrative teams at the building level are a crucial component to achieving a strong learning culture that faces minimal disruptions due to behavior issues or lack of engagement. Dr. Goggin has become a part of the fabric of the Webster community, and her vision for moving the district forward has propelled us towards several initiatives, from Innovation Pathways, curriculum resets, and a forward-thinking school building project. Continued efforts at relationship development focused within the school building among administrators, staff, and students will enhance outcomes for all. I would like to publicly thank Dr. Goggin for her tireless efforts and positive impact on the Webster School District. I look forward to continuing our partnership. I'm confident that under her leadership, we will continue our forward progress to address our need areas and further enhance the culture within our schools for the benefit of both our students and our staff. Superintendent Goggin has proficient family and community engagement. All other areas are affected by the many changes in staff and administrators. Consistency, expectations, and communication are keys to success, but they're constantly changing. Concern is the lack of staff needed for our students with special needs. Dr. Goggin continues to take actions to improve instruction for all students by working with her team to identify meaningful curriculum that can be implemented with fidelity. Data from sources such as iReady is analyzed, and additional supports are added for students when needed. Overall, when Dr. Goggin presents at meetings or is speaking with her one-on-one, her high expectations and goals of academic improvements are evident. Projects such as Innovation Pathways, Project Lead the Way, and One Goal speak to her high expectations of staff and students and what is included in a Bartlett education. Dr. Goggin communicates regularly through newsletters to families, always including students' events and celebrations. Dr. Goggin recognizes the hard work that needs to be done and through the budget process, and she incorporates supports such as additional teachers to provide additional academic intervention. Dr. Goggin, along with her team at Central Office, work hard to ensure the district follows compliance regulations, and they continue to present robust budget strategy year after year. The team has built, the team she has built with Central Office is a strong team who supports each other and work collaboratively. This year was a hard year for behavior disruptions across the district. Dr. Goggin has begun to develop a behavior reset within the district. This behavior reset will go hand-in-hand with creating and fostering internal relationships with building administration, as well as teachers and staff. With Dr. Goggin's hard work and commitment, the district will move forward towards achieving the goal of consistency across schools. Family and community engagement come easily for Dr. Goggin. She fosters healthy relationships with many families, as well as local businesses, which has led to multiple student opportunities for growth and development. I commend her for her hard work and daily dedication in making Webster Public Schools a better place. Thank you so much for your caring approach and your daily hard work for our students. So that concludes the summary of the ratings and the comments. There are more individualized ratings and comments throughout the evaluation that I won't go through this evening. But I would like to thank you, Dr. Goggin. I don't think there's anyone that I have met that works harder than you do. And your efforts and your dedication is appreciated. And I think that this is a tough evaluation this year, and I think it's evidence of a very challenging couple of years leading up to where we are. We're really looking forward to continuous improvement moving forward. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of the Unit B 2022 to 2025 contract.
I will give you just a brief summary. Once again, we had a successful negotiations in a one meeting. We were able to accomplish what we needed to. The Unit B salary increase for year one will be at 2.75. Year two will be at 2.25. Year three will be at 2.25. We've added Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and we've added bargaining unit members who have completed three years in the school district will be allowed to roll over five unused vacation days.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Unit B 2022 to 2025 contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your work on that contract. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of Instructional Assistant 2022 to 2025 contract.
A brief summary. We had a couple meetings on with the paraprofessionals and the ABAs. The summary on their conclusion of their negotiation was to increase their substitute rate to $50, increase one day for ABAs for professional development. They had less days than paraprofessionals. Adding Juneteenth only if it falls in the school calendar year and not on a Saturday, because depending where it falls, the paraprofessionals and ABA could be done with their school year. And then we've added sort of a stipend for the paraprofessionals who are working in the specialized programs. For, if they complete a year, it would be a $1,000 stipend for working in a STAR program or a Quest program. We also added that paraprofessionals working in specialized programs may be granted additional time for necessary training per an approval process. The salary for the IAs was, we condensed the salary chart, so there's an increase and a shorter salary scale. They had a salary that would be step one, step two, step three, and we condensed it into 14 or 12?
Twelve steps.
Twelve?
Being getting paraprofessionals and the pay rate being a little lower, making that pay rate more competitive to attract...
And it's working, because our office has been busy. So year one, they have a new salary chart. Year two, they'll have a 2.25. Year three, they'll have a 2.25. The ABA salary chart remains the same, and they'll be 2.75, 2.25, I'm sorry, 2.5 and a 2.25. And then we made some slight evaluation updates in languages between the ABAs and the paraprofessionals. All in all, it was a very successful negotiation once again.
Dr. Goggin, any questions or comments from the committee regarding the Instructional Assistant contract? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Instructional Assistant contract for 2022 to 2025.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you again to everyone who worked on that contract. Oh, okay, thank you. So moving back to old business, superintendent evaluation. There were no questions or comments about that evaluation, and I will entertain a motion to approve the evaluation as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Laurie. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
In your packet, you have a transfer request from my office. At the end of the year, we asked for a blanket transfer to allow me to close out the fiscal year. It allows me to transfer between line items, not only from salary to salary, but to clean up the budget, so I can present a cleaned up budget at the end of the school year. So I'm looking for permission to authorize a transfer of funds.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer request as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you.